Good evening colleagues, can you please be seated, thank you. Well, good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the Borough Council. This meeting has been recorded and live streamed. Welcome to those members of the public in the public gallery and those watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record proceedings, please do so from the public gallery. And don't interfere with the business of the meeting, thank you. If the fire alarm sounds, with those sitting in the public gallery exit the doors behind you and those colleagues in here, these doors here, and we'll all meet at the front of the town hall, thank you. Please ensure your mobile phones are on silent or switched off and any member wishing to speak, please use your microphone and stand. Full council today will only deal with the business that is set out in the summons. Can I take this opportunity to remind members about the code of conduct at this meeting? At South Tyneside Council, we are proud, that is professional, respectful, open and honest, understanding and engaging and to deliver what we say we will. Professional means we uphold high standards. Respectful means we value people. We've all agreed to be polite, thoughtful and kind and listen to what others have to say. And we should all always demonstrate respectful and courteous behaviour and I'm insisting on that. I've received apologies from councillor, best councillor, Remi Curran please, Kennedy and councillor Potts, are there any further apologies please? Councillor Kilguar?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I've got apologies from councillor Lamont as well.
Councillor Lamont, Karen, councillor Huntley?
Thanks Kate, there's apologies from both councillor Maxwell's.
Any other apologies? No, okay, thank you. The first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration before we move on to the next item? Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to declare an interest as Chair of the Adult and Children's Safeguarding on item seven on the agenda, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Joyce Wells?
Yes, I'd like to declare an interest on item seven as Vice Chair of Safeguarding Adults and Children and motion three as Chair of Bright Futures and, sorry, motion two and motion three, pecuniary interest as among the Police and Crime Panel of Northumbria. I'm also an executive member of the National Association of Police Fire and Crime Panels.
So just remind you that if you've got a disclosable pecuniary interest when that item is discussed, you will need to leave the chair during that item, okay? Councillor Pauline?
Thank you Mayor, I'd like to declare an interest on motion one as I am Armed Forces Champion.
Councillor Foreman?
Yeah, declare an interest, Mr Mayor, with the Northumberland Police Panel.
Okay, thanks, thank you Jim. Councillor Robertson?
No, another term mine off. Declare an interest in my mother's adult and children's safeguarding panel, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, on the petition one, Mr Mayor, I'd like to declare a personal interest as a member of the Whitburn Neighbourhood Forum. As this is a personal interest, I was able to remain in the meeting and participate in any discussion and debate, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, no, the interest, if there's something does crop up during the course of the meeting and you feel you need to make a declaration of interest, please do so, thank you. The next item of business is the Minister of the Meeting of the Council on the 19th of October 2023. Are they accepted as the correct record? Thank you. The next item of business is the Mayor's announcements and communications. I've already read out what I feel is an important point regarding behaviour and I want everybody to take note and heed of that. Today is St Andrew's Day, celebrated in Scotland, the patron saint of Scotland, St Andrew. So, all of the people of Scottish descent living in South Tyneside, I wish you all a very good St Andrew's Day. And, you know, it's something that's celebrated possibly throughout the world with the way that the Scots have went across the world. So, a good day, St Andrew's Day, love it. Today is also a very happy day, it's the mayor's birthday. So, wherever you are Julie, a happy birthday dear and hopefully the meeting will not be too long, but I doubt it. Okay, item four, to consider the annual report of the Chair of the Audit Committee. And I'm going to ask councillor Dawes as the Chair of the Audit Committee to move the report. Councillor Dawes, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, elected members, members of the public. Governance is about doing things right in the right way with the right people in a timely, inclusive, honest and accountable manner. As Chair of the Committee with support from the Vice Chair, I am pleased to present this annual report to provide all members with information about the work of this important committee and the key matters that we have considered. This report covers a period since I last reported to the Council in October 2022. Now, this allows me to report to you around activity considered at meetings in the 2022/23 municipal year, i.e. May 2022 to May 2023, but also in also work in respect of the 2022/23 financial year. We see opportunities for the Audit Committee to continue to develop and provide challenge and support to ensure effective governance. This is in line with our values. We are keen, we're also keen to drive forward the work in improvements in openness, transparency and reporting of the work that this committee undertakes. However, committee is not the body solely support responsible for effective governance across the council. This is a responsibility for us all in how we discharge our roles either as members or as officers. Councillor Andrew Guy and myself were appointed as Vice Chair and Chair respectively when membership of the committee was refreshed in May 2023. At the same time, we reappointed two co-opted independent members to the committee. Our co-opted members play a crucial role in reinforcing the pivotal neutrality and independence of the committee and help to maintain continuity of committee. Remember that committee membership is affected by the electoral cycle. The committee meets quarterly in line with our terms of reference and has met over the period covered by this report six times. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all members and officers for their positive contribution in supporting our work in the Audit Committee. Our report sets out the approach to training and development and reflects how important this is across our council. We are committed to ongoing training and development within our committee to ensure that we have the necessary skills, experience and more importantly, knowledge across our membership and we have agreed a training programme with officers which supports this. This is complemented by learning from others through myself and the Vice Chair, Andrew Guy, Councillor Andrew Guy, with engagement, regional engagement with other Audit Committee Chairs within the region. Our co-opted members bring additional knowledge and expertise to the committee because both of them are qualified accountants. Between them, they bring skills, knowledge and experience both in internal audits and working with audit committees operating across a range of the of public sector organisations. The external view is invaluable to the committee. We're also committed to raising awareness of our work and that of internal audits across all members. So, we have a training offer now available to all members. In fact, there has just been a session on the role of internal audit which has just been taking place prior to this meeting. If you have not already done so, I would encourage you to perhaps attend some future sessions which we're currently arranging. The report sets out details of the activities and issues we have considered in the last year. For example, we have received, reviewed and challenged the Strategic Risk Register at each committee meeting, ensuring the council is taking appropriate steps to mitigate and managing key risks. This is also fight, there's also financial pressures, cyber resilience and safeguarding vulnerable adults, vulnerable adults and children in common with most other councils. These remain amongst the greatest risks that we all face. We have considered both the internal audit, annual reports and opinion statements which assess the adequacy and effectiveness of the council's governance, risk management and control frameworks. The internal audit opinion for 22/23 was classified as substantial assurance, meaning that overall, there is a sound system of control in place across the framework of governance, with risk management and control operated by the council. Of course, there are some areas where controls are not consistently applied or fully effective or indeed do not deliver value for money. However, it's noted that there were no significant areas of concern arising directly from internal audit activity. Due to a technical accounting issue outside of the council's control which has impacted most local authorities and delayed the conclusion of the external audit, we have considered both the 2020/21 and 21/22 statement of accounts and have approved the 22/23 annual governance statement for the council. The annual governance statement summarises the outcomes of a review undertaken across all of the council's governance. Whilst this is broadly positive, there remain several areas for improvement which we have identified. We also considered budget, we have also considered budget monitoring reports and received updates at each and every meeting of the committee on the strong progress in delivering upon agreed actions arising from this review. This is to further strengthen financial management across the council. To facilitate ongoing improvements, the opportunity to work with external partners in the future will continue to be considered by the committee. Finally, colleagues, paragraph 4.27 builds on the work that we have covered in this report and sets out what we plan to achieve in 23/24. This committee will operate, will continue to operate and in a political manner. We will maintain our independence and provide robust challenge so that we can provide assurance to the council that its control arrangements continue to operate effectively. Council, I recommend you to note the contents of this report, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dawes, is that report seconded?
Seconded, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would you like to speak about it?
Reserve, reserve the right to speak later.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you for the report. A few comments. I cannot understand why at page five of your report, at 4.24, where you make reference to children's services in Ofsted and as the Chair of the Audit Committee, you're stating that no children came to any harm. Now, if you don't mind when I've finished, if you could give an explanation why you would state that in your report when there's been no investigation, you've had no involvement, you personally stating no children came to any harm, no investigation and no police involvement. So, I don't know why you would put that in your report, I'd like to explain if you don't mind, please. So, at page five of your report, you say that the Audit Committee considered the 2021 statement of accounts and approved the annual governance statement and at 4.23 you state the same for the 2021/22 statement of accounts. And the reason why you've done the two is because the first ones were late, which was common knowledge, nothing to do with the council. Now, in them statement of accounts, you've got the exit payments that were made to the staff and you've just said before there that the Audit Committee's challenged the council on various things and you have scrutinised. So, in the news this week on the BBC about Northumberland Council, their monitor officer has referred the exit packet payments to Northumbria Police, right? Now, within our accounts that you're saying that you have approved and you have scrutinised and challenged the council, in the accounts, on my reckoning, it's over £5 million that we've paid out in 2022/23 to, for exit packages. As an example, there's 62 people received between £50,000 and £54,000. There's 39 people received between £50,000 and £59,000, this is all in one year, this is 2022/23. There's 17 people received between £50,000 and £64,000. Nine people received between £70,000 and £74,000. Seven people received between £75,000 and £79,000, yeah? One, sorry, one person received between £100,000 and £104,000. One person received between £130,000 and £134,000, we're going into the millions last year for exit packages for staff. Did the Audit Committee scrutinise and challenge the council and all that? It's unbelievable the people that's left this council with the golden handshake for whatever reason have asked the leader of the council for an investigation, bear in mind this BBC report. When we're paying out about £4-£5 million in exit packages, this Audit Committee must be challenging them, yeah? And I'd like a response at the end of the report, please, if you don't mind, because I repeat, I've asked the leader today, I've asked the chief executive today, after seeing them BBC headlines, can we confirm, I'm not making accusations, can we confirm that everything is done right with these millions of pounds in exit packages last year and the year before?
And there comes, so that's two questions you've asked. Do you want councillor Dawes to reply tonight? I don't think councillor Dawes is in a position to give you a full explanation. But I would ask councillor Dawes if he could give some written answers to the questions that's been raised as soon as possible, please, is that possible?
Yes, I would be delighted to do that, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Any other members? Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, on the SIFPA visit and action plan, we uncovered numerous serious financial failures which have still not been completed with. Will the lead member please explain why the section 151 officer was not dismissed over this?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not allowing that question.
It's the truth.
I'm not, I'm not allowing that question.
Right, okay, thank you, Mr Mayor.
That question will be answered by councillor Dawes in his report because that question was also raised by councillor Robertson, okay? Yes, councillor Robertson, yes, he has, that's right, okay, can I just explain, you've already spoken. So, the, this could be brought back to full council, but you've asked for an explanation, you've asked three questions. Councillor Dawes will reply as soon as practicable. And you can take it from there if you feel it should come back to full council, well, yeah, 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 that's right, that's right. You will receive a response, in a written response. Any other member? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for the report. And I think it's very positive that you noted that it is an apolitical committee that does this work and I'm well aware that it's a cross-party, you know, non-partisan committee that does this work and that's, that's fully appropriate, seems to me. And it reads like a well-considered report and, and seems honest about areas that can be improved. So I just wanted to draw attention to paragraph or section 4.20, which ends by saying there are some areas where controls are not consistently applied or fully effective and/or do not deliver value for money. But there isn't any detail on what those areas are and so I would just ask if it's possible to have that information for all members, just so that we're all in the loop with, with where we think the improvements need to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chair, for the, the report was a very well, very well received. And I think it's important to really hammer home that it is an apolitical committee and I'm particularly encouraged by both the hard work of, you know, the members of the committee but also the officers behind the scenes that prepare enormous reports with great amount of detail. The SIFPA review, if you, and I've asked this question of our section 151 officer recently. When you look at the table, it does look like very, very slow changes are being made. When you actually dive into the granular level of work that is actually happening behind the scenes, it's an enormous task. And hearing about that pretty much every single meeting, but also between the meetings, it is, it is good. The £5 million of exit payments, I, I don't feel it's within the scope of the Audit Committee, it sounds awfully like a HR matter and a morale matter. Any point, I think both me and the Chair would be welcome to anyone wanting to raise concerns, anything, you know, we're happy to take it. And even if there's a concern that they don't want it investigated by the council, any member of that committee can go to our external auditor and speak directly with them in private. I think that's important to note. and speak directly with them in private. I think that's important to note. Um, I'm looking forward to the next year worth of work. I'm looking forward to working apolitical, also cross-party as well and really hammering good governance within our committee and hopefully beyond. But thank you.
Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you. Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much for your report there, councillor Dawes. Just with regard to councillor Robertson, with regard to the Northumberland payment, it was actually referred to the police duty not following the prescribed process. It wasn't because of any of the sums involved, colleagues. That's just what I've been aware, made aware of. Anything that we did, we actually did get authorised, Mr Mayor, just for a point of information.
Thanks for your comments, councillor Guy. Thank you for your report, councillor Dawes. Um, do we agree, the report? Thank you. The next item of business is to consider the annual report of the Independent Chair of Standards Committee. And I will ask councillor Carter, Cabinet Member and Member of the Standards Committee authorised to speak at full council to move the report. Councillor Carter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, this is the third report of the Independent Chair of Standards Committee, Professor Graham Wright, and covers a period of August twenty twenty one to August twenty twenty three. The report highlights the work of Standards Committee and how the committee has discharged its functions during that period. The report includes a summary of the Chair's personal observations of progress made and addresses issues which may still require attention. I welcome this report from the Independent Chair and would like to acknowledge my gratitude to Professor Wright for his dedicated contributions and his commitment to lead and promote the work of the Standards Committee. I would also like to thank all my fellow Standards Committee members who have contributed fully and diligently to the work of the Standards Committee. Reporting to full council in this way is intended to ensure there is a regular and consistent approach to the reporting and consideration of standards of conduct by elected members and to promote local ownership and collective responsibility by all elected members for ensuring high standards of conduct within our authority. Standards in public life have been under the spotlight for many years. The Nolan Principles were published in nineteen ninety five in response to the conduct of some members of the Commons during John Major's tenure as Prime Ministers, and those principles still stand today. In the time of being, I have been a member of the Standards Committee, the concept of standards in public life and in society at large have been the subject of fierce debate, locally and nationally. A robust ethical culture should be integral to the way organisations operate. Evidence shows that an ethical culture does not emerge by accident. It requires discussion and action. Standards Committee echo those views. To this end, the role of the Standards Committee is to promote, maintain and protect standards of conduct within the council and propriety in all council proceedings. Doing things in the right way and in the public interest is critical for public confidence in the bodies that operate on the public's behalf and supports the delivery of public services. As the council faces the many challenges presented to it year after year, I would urge members to maintain, to remain mindful of the fundamental importance of high standards of conduct for all members of the public to maintain their trust and confidence in local democracy. Colleagues, I would ask all of you to consider and reflect on their own standards of conduct. For example, I wonder how many of us have completed the code of conduct training provided by the monitoring officer and deputy monitoring officer following the May twenty twenty three elections. Chair, whilst I am the Cabinet Member on Standards Committee with authority to speak on behalf of Standards Committee at meetings of Borough Council, I would like for the first time to hand over to Professor Wright, who will speak to his own report and be available to answer any questions members may have. Thank you, Professor Wright.
Professor Wright?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for inviting me to be here this evening. And if you have questions, to try and answer them directly. Um, my report is actually largely factual, so there's lots of tables and numbers which I don't think are contested. Um, the report is really about two areas of work of the Standards Committee. One is considering corporate complaints, that is to say, members of the public who complain about the service quality that they've received and indeed who may compliment the council on the quality of the service they've received. And the second is concerning the code of conduct. You'll find pages four to seven, um, information about the quality of service. And I should just point out that, of course, the committee does not look at the actual complaints which come in concerning corporate complaints. Our, our role is to make sure that the, um, that the complaints process is working effectively and efficiently. And with the intention, of course, that the quality of the service is subsequently improved. You'll find that page four to seven, pages nine to seventeen concern complaints about councillors alleged to have breached the code of conduct. Now, let me say, as, as Lord Evans said in his recent speech, that, um, uh, the vast majority of public servants, officers, councillors, politicians are working diligently. And I would like to say that we all of us make mistakes. We all of us do things which we might bite our tongues later and say we shouldn't have said that. But it's the role of the committee to identify um, behaviour which may be considered to have been a breach of the code of conduct. You can see on, but I'm come, come on to the details of that later. Referring back to corporate complaints, um, I was going to say you can see on chart on page five of my report, but in fact you can't see it because for some reason it hasn't printed on the copy that you've been given. Um, it's got some strange shadows, but those of you with your laptops should still be able to see the, the chart. The main message of that chart, however, is clear, and that is that the number of complaints about the quality of service has been declining since two thousand and seventeen peak. And that's really good news, and we're very pleased to hear it. Um, we might ask ourselves why there are any complaints at all. And that maybe we shouldn't just get used to the idea of seeing numbers going down and not, not questioning why we have any at all. That said, as we say in the committee very often, complaints are an essential part of the process because complaints help us to see what might be going wrong and to investigate and hopefully if things are going wrong, put them right. But I do say, actually, at page twenty one of the, I do question whether or not our current system, in particular the committee system within the council, whether or not it provides opportunities for members to challenge officers where persistent patterns of complaints are arising. Um, I'm not clear myself, and that might be my ignorance, but I'm not clear myself how, for example, the observation that there are a certain number of complaints in a quarter, how are they dealt with and where are they dealt with within the corporate structure and within the management structure, giving opportunity for monitoring and supervision by councillors? Turning to the code of conduct, um, complaints on table, table one on page ten of my, that's my pages ten, I'm sorry, I'm not sure of the page number, I think about thirty. Thank you very much. Page thirty of your papers for this evening. Um, I'm reporting that since January two thousand and twenty, there have been two hundred and twenty complaints, that is to say allegations that a councillor has breached the code of conduct. A hundred and seventy nine of those complaints have been closed. And more than half of those complaints were closed, in fact, sixty percent of them were closed because the complaint was rejected by the monitoring officer. Uh, that might be because it doesn't fit the code of conduct. There may be other ways to complain. Or it may be that simply, I'm, I'm sorry to say this, but I'm going to, some people just seem to write in complaining. And you could read in brackets, I just don't like this councillor, or it's not said what I want it to do. Now, I don't know why people send in complaints, but every complaint that comes in has to be looked at. We don't have somebody who sits saying, oh, here's a complaint we can throw away. So when we receive complaints alleging breaches of the code of conduct, they have to be looked at. So just to go back, the hundred and seventy nine have been closed, twenty seven percent of those were withdrawn by the complainant. Eleven percent of them were informally resolved. Often, that's a matter of an apology and a shaking of hands as the apology is accepted. Um, sixty percent, as I say, have been rejected by the monitoring office and three percent have led on to hearings. On table two in page ten, page thirty in your papers, you will see that there are currently, or at least in August, there were forty two open cases with ten of which were formal investigations were underway. Since January twenty twenty, only five code of conduct complaints have progressed to a hearing stage. That means the hearing stage is the final stage. It is, however, and I would stress this, the first stage at which anybody should know about this complaint because before then the complaints process is confidential. The complaint comes in, it's considered. If a decision is made that the complaint has substance, then an investigation is undertaken. The investigation involves interviews with the subject member and with the complainant. Having done so, the monitoring officer or the investigating officer then decides whether or not the complaint is to be upheld. It's at that point, if they do so decide, that the Standards Committee are sent the papers and a date is set for a hearing. So a confidential system until the hearing, at which point councillors on the Standards Committee are able to consider the report of the investigating officer. Now, I stress this procedure, and you'll find the procedure written out in pages sixteen to seventeen on my report. And in this report, I've given some detail as to what each of the stages involves. And I've done that specifically because I'm very conscious of the severe delays in some of the complaints that have been received. And so I wanted to draw your attention to how that, how that's probably. Come back to that in a moment, but just for the time being, I would also draw your attention on page eighteen to the heading raising standards. Because the Standards Committee is not about looking to punish people or to complain about people. The Standards Committee is ultimately about raising the standards, the ethical standards of behaviour, the service quality standards of the council. In addition to, um, member training, we've also had induction, um, induction of new councillors, which I'm pleased to report has produced some very, very positive responses this year to the training and induction process that's taken place. And I think that's important because if we expect councillors to undertake the many and varied tasks, it's important that we are guiding and helping and training them in the development of their abilities so to do. Moving finally on to my observations in my report. Um, just to repeat, the, the seven Nolan Principles, honesty, objectivity, openness, selflessness, integrity, accountability, leadership. Please put your hands up if you disagree that they're, they're wonderful objectives. But the practical reality is when we're getting angry with somebody and we want to throw some mud at them, we have to learn sometimes just to bite the tongue. Sometimes bad behaviour needs to be called out. We've had five cases where it has been called out. But we've had two hundred and twenty complaints, a hundred and seventy nine of them, a hundred and seventy nine of them have been closed with sixty percent of them rejected. I'm sorry to say that there's evidence of kind of tit for tat. One party spokesman complains about the other party spokesman and the reverse starts coming and then suddenly we see a whole plethora of complaints coming in. Now, the reason I urge people to think very carefully before making a complaint is this. The procedure for handling a complaint is set out in the constitution of this council. It requires enormous amount of time and effort of senior officers. It therefore takes resources from other parts of the work of the council. So if you know somebody who's about to complain, please consider having a word to see whether it's possible to deal with the offence in whatever way it is in some other way. Despite that, and I reiterate what I said a few minutes ago, complaints help us make things better by identifying the need for change. I did recently, it's not in your report, have a little look at the more details. I, I'm in a privileged position in that I see the complaints, or at least I see of them. Whereas it's confidential, but as the Chair, I'm in fact consulted along with the independent person as to whether or not a complaint should be taken further. One of the observations I would make is this. Six councillors amongst the ninety eight councillors who made a complaint, six councillors accounted for sixty seven percent of those complaints. And when we look to the subject member, those who have been complained about.
Councillor Robertson? Councillor Robertson?
Two hundred and thirty eight complaints, instances of complaints. Four councillors received forty three percent of those code of conduct complaints. Now, that might be the case that there are very good reasons why it's like that. But we need to consider whether or not the amount of resources going into supporting the complaints, code of conduct complaints process is appropriate. Whatever the motivation for the complaint, where there is evidence, where there is evidence of the grounds for believing that a breach of the code of conduct might have occurred, the monitoring officer is duty bound to investigate. So, to, to end. There's a lot of good things been happening in this period of two years that I've covered. There are lots of things that we need to think about. But maybe we could benefit from applying the mantra, disagree agreeably. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Is that, um, seconded? Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Huntley. Um, are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the report, although I disagree with ninety nine percent of it. Um, again, we'll go back to these proud values. You know, for the people watching on television, South Tyneside Council has also agreed a set of council values to define that what we stand for as an organisation and the things that we are most important in terms of how we work and act. In South Tyneside Council, we are proud. Peace for professional, awe for respectful, awe for open and honest. P for professional, R for respectful, O for open and honest, U for understanding, D for deliver what we say we will. This Standards Committee isn't fit for purpose. That report, coming to this full council, I've read it, I've studied it, I've done my work on it, and now I've heard you speaking on it. I'm one of the, obviously, I'm the best customer at the Standards Committee. I've been there, I've endured both sides of the coin. You know, I've been in front of the councillors that are genuine, that would take you through and comply with the Localism Act, and I've been in front of the councillors and the chair who've ignored the Localism Act. You mentioned training for councillors. As the independent chair, I'm sure this council spent a lot of money on training for you. And that training will have mostly consisted of the Localism Act, section twenty eight. Now, what you're seeing here is, in your report, you state, since January twenty twenty, there's been five cases taking the formal hearing, CO three, C nineteen, C twenty four. I was for complaint C nineteen, C twenty four. This training in doing things properly and not cutting corners, this council done four out of five Standards Committee hearings without a properly appointed independent person. This isn't me just letting steam off on camera and highlighting and grandstanding. My complaints about this matter are now on the local government ombudsman's website. You should not do a report stating that these things have happened when you've had the training, you know what section twenty eight point eight says. The council must advertise for an independent person, the person must apply for the position, and this full council, a majority of the full council, must approve them. The independent person that you condoned for them four hearings was not qualified. For me, councillor Malcolm and councillor Peacock. Only councillor Malcolm's second Standards Committee hearing was done correctly. And there's a famous case, I'll let you, as an independent chair, please look at the case of Ledbury versus, sorry, Harvey versus Ledbury Town Council. Please have a look at that case, everyone in this room, if you want to look into standards. And the Harvey versus Ledbury case tells you, the High Court judge said, any council that doesn't comply with section twenty eight of the Localism Act, that decision will be quashed. When councillor Malcolm was going to Standards Committee, I emailed him and I told him.
councillor Robertson, could you just sit down a minute, please? I'm sorry to say I feel that you, you know, misconduct yourself. You know, it's not fair, it's not equitable to mention various cases of other people. And I'm not prepared to put up with this anymore. So please take this as a warning to moderate your behaviour.
Can I finish, please?
If you don't heed the warning, you give me no option but to take appropriate action to ensure the rules of debate are followed. Now, let's move on with the business. Do not make personal attacks, do not mention anybody else. If you're going to make, you know, a speech as you are, obviously you're time limited and your time's nearly up. But I'm not prepared to put up with this sort of ranker. And I said that at the beginning of the meeting, we'll behave with a proud. So, you know, either moderate your behaviour or I will make you sit down.
Thank you. So, in the report, it says, I'll talk to everybody, not the chair, delays in holding public hearings of complaints can cause undue stress in the accused subject member, as well as the frustration of the complainants. Recently, me and councillor Roberts got a complaint, I can't talk about it because it's not confidential because it's been cancelled. We got a complaint in October that had been lodged against us, talking about delays, Mr Mayor.
Yeah.
It's not confidential when it's a withdrawn complaint. I cannot speak in this chamber, or what?
As Professor Wright's pointed out, and as Nicola Robertson, who was the head of legal services for tonight, is pointing out to me, it's inappropriate. Inappropriate.
Anything that's not to suit. So my final comments.
Thank you for your second comment.
In the report, it says, but the complaints process is not there to be used as a weapon to attack political opponents. And then it says, there's been improvements, but I'm pleased to observe with some exceptions. Again, an independent chair shouldn't be saying exceptions. And the very final comment is corporate complaints. The data continues to show a decline in the number of corporate complaints. I've been refused six complaints that I've tried to submit to the council. I've had to send them on to the ombudsman. The complaints are going down because they're getting refused. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I don't think we need to reply on that. Was any member, other member, councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'd like to thank the chair and members of the Standards Committee. And I like the disagree agreeably, that's something I try and do myself. I recognise that it's a thankless task. Where there's disagreement, whatever you do, someone's going to be unhappy with the outcome. But it's interesting to read that the number of complaints actually peaked in twenty seventeen to eighteen, and therefore things have actually improved in the five or so years since then. But I recognise that the volume of complaints is still much higher than we would like to see. Just to draw people's attention to the chair's observations, so page twenty one of the report. And about three quarters of the way down, it says, the average time taken to deal with corporate complaints is not currently included in the data reviewed by the Standards Committee. And I think that some kind of average time benchmarking might be useful. And the second thing I wanted to draw attention to, towards the end, it says, one way in which the process could be further enhanced would be to reduce the length of time taken for a complaint to be dealt with and resolved. And I think for both complainants and subjects of complaints, the longer things draw on, the more distress is caused and the more stressful it is. So I would welcome that, but I know we're probably going to end up discussing that later in the agenda tonight. And so I definitely would like to place on record a note of thanks to the committee and the chair. But of course, I would echo also your comments that ultimately the way to make the complaint system work more efficiently and faster and reduce the distress caused is to reduce the number of complaints under the Code of Conduct. That reduces the volume of work and increases the speed of which complaints will be dealt with. And the best way to do that is just to hold work will take responsibility for working within the Code of Conduct, for holding up our values and making sure that we conduct ourselves as the members of the public.
The comments of this report, are they agreed? Thank you. Thank you, Professor. Item six is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs to advise on the constitution of a new political group and to determine the membership of the council committees and an outside body, so that's one outside body. And I will ask councillor Bell as lead member for governance, finance and corporate services to move the report. Councillor Bell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, this report is to advise Borough Council of notice received of the constitution of a new, or should we say returning, political group, the South Tyneside Alliance Group. Welcome back, Stag. This report also advises of the implications on the council's political balance and seat allocations as a consequence, and gives notice to Borough Council of a number of small changes required to the membership of the Planning Committee and the Constitution Committee. There are also proposed changes to the membership of the People's Select Committee, the Housing Performance Scrutiny Panel, and the South Tyneside Citizens Advice Bureau Management Committee, which is an outside body. Colleagues, it is important to note that where political balance requirements apply, full council must comply with the wishes of the political group, whether that be the Labour Group or the Stag Group. Notwithstanding the lack of discretion, the proper appointing body, i.e. Borough Council, must still pass a formal resolution to agree these changes. I believe the report includes all the necessary detail and information, and I would ask that you specifically note the constitution of the South Tyneside Alliance Group and councillor Thompson as the leader of that group. I would ask that you note the recalculation of political balance of the council as a consequence of the constitution of the South Tyneside Alliance Group, and note and agree the change to the membership of the committee set out in paragraph two point one two, specifically the Planning Committee and the Constitution Committee. Finally, I would ask that you note and agree the change to membership of the committees and outside body set out in paragraphs two point one seven, specifically the People's Select Committee, the Housing Performance Scrutiny Panel, and the council's representative on the South Tyneside Citizens Advice Bureau Management Committee. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is that seconded? Councillor Kilgore, thank you. Are there any questions, or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, I'll say about the proud values, we've committed that we are going to be professional, open and honest. Within this report, it doesn't just mention that the new group and mentions about councillor Malcolm being allocated to a committee, and that hasn't been covered. So I'm allowed to cover it now if I've got comments on it because nobody's mentioned it. Is there a reason why it was missed?
I think councillor Bell did mention the changes to the panel. If you want to watch the replay, she did mention that, yes.
Right, I understand. So people watching it don't understand that, so I'll just say. What the papers are saying is two councillors want to come off two committees, the Housing Performance Panel and the People's Select Committee. And the Labour Group is saying that councillor Malcolm, there's a coffin, so the microphone doesn't hear us. Right, so councillor Malcolm gets put into them two positions. We'll all remember, it was only eight months ago that the double standards committee had.
Okay, right, I want, sit down councillor Robertson. You know, you're misconduct yourself again.
Well, I apologise. It was a slip up, I apologise.
Yeah, you know, you're persistently disregarding my rulings. And, you know, I'm asking you to, you know, you're quoting the proud values. And then immediately, you know, you're launching an unfair supposition about a member in this council, and I'm not prepared to put up with it. Now, take this as a warning to moderate your behaviour. And if you don't heed the warning, I'm going to ask that you no longer be heard on this subject.
I apologise again.
Okay.
Right, so the Labour Group has voted to put councillor Malcolm on these two committees. And we've just heard the speech about the Standards Committee and where we want this council to be and what we want the future to be. Now, councillor Malcolm was in front of the Standards Committee only.
That's it, sit down, please.
He's in the report?
Keep quiet. I'll deal with it here.
He's in the report, how can I not speak about it, my aye, honest to God.
Right. I'm proposing that councillor Robertson no longer be heard on this subject. Is that seconded, please? Okay. Let's move on with the business. Okay. Does any other member wish to speak to the report, ask questions? Okay. Thank you, colleagues, is this motion agreed? Thank you. We don't need any silly comments. Okay, we don't need any silly comments. And councillor Roberts, take this as a warning from me to moderate your behaviour tonight as well. Otherwise, I will take appropriate action. All right? Okay, let's move on with the business. The next item is to consider a report of the Director of Public Health on Domestic Abuse Annual Update on the White Ribbon Campaign, two oh two three. I will ask councillor Barclay as lead member for Adults, Health and Independence to move the report. Councillor Barclay, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am pleased to bring this report to council, which details the work undertaken by the Domestic Abuse Board. For example, the move towards an integrated domestic abuse model for victims and perpetrators. The report details the second year of activity of the partnership board. We have engaged with victims, perpetrators, staff and partners to help feed into our remodelling process to help identify gaps in service provision and ensure that we deliver a service that is fit for purpose. The new locality model detailed within the report comprises of three main elements. The main integrated domestic abuse hub, a targeted hub working within the communities of Biddeck Hall and White Lees, and the procurement of safer accommodation. The integrated hub will be a dedicated location for the delivery of victim support services, interventions to support children and young people, having a focus on early intervention, prevention and specialist support. The targeted element will work with the community of Biddeck Hall and White Lees. There will be a focus of raising awareness of domestic abuse and linking in with educational settings and promoting healthy relationships, and also identifying perpetrators as early as possible to protect victims and families. The safe accommodation element will include both a refuge and dispersed properties. This has gone to a formal tender process which commenced this month. I am now going to report on our White Ribbon Campaign. I would remind council, the White Ribbon Day is the twenty first, twenty fifth of November every year. The theme for twenty twenty three was changing the story. White Ribbon UK is an awareness raising charity working to end male violence against women. White Ribbon holds an annual campaign to raise awareness and launched sixteen days of activism against gender based violence, which is an international campaign. As part of our accreditation, we have actively supported the campaign again this year by promoting key messages to staff, members and residents. We encourage men to make the White Ribbon promise to never use, excuse or remain silent about men's violence against women. We also encourage men to wear a white ribbon all year round. We want to help to change the story for women and girls so that they can live their lives free from fear of violence. We encourage members and staff who have not yet signed up as ambassadors or champions to do so. A letter has been sent to all employers signed up to the Better Health at Work Award and the South Tyneside Pledge, encouraging them to take action, sign up to the White Ribbon Campaign and accreditation. Throughout the sixteen days, the council will share key messages with staff and residents across many platforms, including how to access support. We are working with all our partners to maximise the reach of the campaign across all settings. The town hall will be lit up white and orange in perspective days. The white flag was flown on the twenty fifth of November. White ribbons were available from South Shields Town Hall receptions, Jarrell Town Hall, The Word, Jarrell Focus Action Stations, Heaven Central and Haven Point. Can I please ask all members to sign up to the White Ribbon Promise as either ambassadors or champions? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'd like to second that.
Okay, councillor here. Are there any questions, or does any member wish to speak to the report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Barclay. I really welcome this report as domestic abuse is such a serious issue. It clearly needs to be addressed as a priority. And prevention of domestic abuse is key, so it's really positive. The report includes the work being done with perpetrators to reduce reoffending and the council's role since last year as an accredited white ribbon campaign organisation. The fact that there were over five thousand incidents in our borough in the year twenty two to twenty three, and that that is almost a quarter higher than the average across the Northumbria Force area, is a grave concern. And the fact that this level of incidence remains high shows the change that change in the way we're working on this as part of the domestic abuse safeguarding board is definitely needed, very welcome. And it's really good to hear that the move to the new model, the locality model, is underway particularly for victim support and safer accommodation. Could I ask for some further information, which could be in the form of written answers? But firstly, about the plan for victim support. As it is a real concern of the one thousand three hundred and twenty three referrals for independent support. support, only 717 engaged with that support. And obviously, there's reasons why not. But one of the concerns is that to reach those who are not engaging, as often, those who are hardest to contact are more likely to be suffering the most severe violence. And on the plan for safer accommodation, the refuge is vital and it is only able to support a tiny number of victims and their children. So I welcome the plan for a number of dispersed accommodations. But in the light of over 5,000 incidents, I, you know, would just ask, is there a target for how many people we would be able to be looking to assist in that way? And another question would be, as the children of victims who move to these dispersed accommodations across the borough, are they provided with transport to school if it is safe for them to continue attending their existing school? Because, of course, that's the benefit of that continuity for the children. And finally, the reinstatement of the sanctuary housing scheme this year is also very welcome to enable more victims to stay in their own homes with additional safety measures. Again, only 45 victims have been supported in the period reported to up to June. So will this number be significantly increased in the future? But thank you for the report.
Councillor Barclay, do you want to reply to that, please?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very pleased with the comments that you've made, and I do take on board the questions that you've got. And I will definitely ensure that you get a written response to those because they are quite detailed as well. So I want to make sure that we give you accurate information.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the report. It makes real good reading. The only question I've got is, why is there only two wards mentioned? Obviously, it'll be for all of South Tyneside, but why, I know it's same one of the bases or whatever. Can you explain why Biddeck Hall and Whiteleys is only mentioned and no other wards are mentioned type of thing, please?
Again, if council will agree, I will give a written report to that to explain the rationale behind why we've targeted those two wards to put services into there first. But it will be across the borough eventually, but we're looking at that. But I'll give you a detailed report to that.
Okay. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for the report. Just echo what's been said about the number of incidents. And I've been a police officer for 30 years. I understand the serious effect it makes to violence has on people. I'm just wondering if you could find out through the police colleagues, how many convictions and how many arrests have been made for these offences? Because this needs to be tackled from all sides. And I'm a firm believer, a firm approach by the police, making arrests and convictions, if it doesn't deter them, it will certainly stop those people from re-offending. But thank you for the report. And if you could maybe find out that information about what the proactive police are doing, action to make sure some of these culprits are arrested. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I want to emphasise the fact that we are working, it's our second year for the partnership to be working, and we are all working together and looking at how we can tackle it together. And that partnership working has been really important for how we've decided that we need to move forward in how we represent people who are experiencing and living with domestic abuse. So I will certainly make sure that we can get some statistics together that are accurate from the police about how many cases have been progressed.
Thank you. Councilors, I'd like to note and acknowledge the work of the Domestic Abuse Partnership Board to act and support the Change the Story campaign, promoting White Ribbon Day and the messages throughout the 16 days of activism. All members are requested to sign either as ambassadors or champions via the White Ribbon Organisation. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. We now want to consider questions received under procedure rule eight. Two questions have been received under this rule. Both questions are printed on the council agenda. Under council procedure rule 8.1.1.1, I must take a question submitted by a member of the council first. I've received a question from councillor Francis. Councillor Francis, could I invite you to read up your question? And just before you do so, you know, you sent an email to myself and Nicola Robertson. And, you know, just to clarify, before you ask your question, that the YouGov poll referred to was for information rather than being part of the question. Are you satisfied with that? Please put your question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. People around the world have been horrified by the recent events in Israel and Palestine. South Tyneside Council represents a diverse and multicultural borough, where Muslims, Jews and people of all faiths and none should feel safe and supported. Sadly, recent events have demonstrated that there's a rise in religious and racial intolerance in the UK, with an increase in Islamophobic and antisemitic violence and abuse and hate crime. What specific measures is South Tyneside Council putting in place to challenge and condemn the use of all divisive and dehumanising language and offer appropriate support to any local resident who experiences religious and/or racial intolerance in this time of crisis? And support international calls for a ceasefire in the Israel-Gaza conflict, something which was recently supported in Parliament by both local MPs and is supported by 76% of the UK population, according to a recent YouGov poll. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Francis. Obviously, the question you raise is a matter of such great significance. And we would require a more direct response than normally waiting the seven days. So could I ask the leader of the council to give a verbal response now, please?
Yes, yes, of course. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And councillor Francis, thank you for your question. And I'm sure I speak for everyone in the chamber when I say I've been horrified at the violence that we have seen coming out of both Israel and Gaza. I understand and echo your concerns about decisive and dehumanising language. And it is sad that the fact that in the wake of this violence that we've seen in Palestine and Israel, incidents of Islamic phobia and antisemitism have risen across the UK. I would therefore like to take this opportunity to say that we are a very, sorry, excuse me, sorry about that. I would therefore like to take this opportunity to state very clearly, we as a council unequivocally condemn these actions. Racism of any kind has absolutely no place in South Tyneside. We have a long and proud history of being an open and diverse borough, and we will reject in the strongest possible terms any attempt to denigrate or dehumanise either Israelis or Palestinians. There are human beings at the centre of this conflict whose lives have been ravaged by the death and destruction we have seen. Mr Mayor, we cannot forget this. If any resident has been affected by incidents, then I would urge them to get in touch with either the Northumbria Police or the council, where we will do our very best to provide the appropriate support to residents affected. We have all been hugely relieved to see a break in the violence and the release of hostages back to their families. And we would further note hopes for a more permanent solution and for more hostages to be freed. Mr Mayor, given the situation is fast-moving, it would be appropriate to have a better understanding of the developments over the next few weeks, when we will be able to respond in more detail at that time. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. And councillor Francis, it's a question you're not coming back on it. Okay. But thank you very much for asking that question. You can't ask a supplemental question.
That's what I was hoping for. Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is just to clarify what was said, really. And I really appreciate the comments that you've made there. And obviously, considerable considerations gone into that response. So I appreciate the time there. I think the thing that I'm struggling with a little bit is, we're talking about a conflict that's gone on for a very long time. And so whilst you mentioned that things are moving at a pace, and I totally accept that things are different now than when I submitted the question. It's a question of, at what stage do you take a stand? And so you've mentioned that you would need to consider how things develop before taking a firm stance on calling for a ceasefire, or, you know, supporting calls for a ceasefire or not. But if that's an open-ended thing, then I just question, is there a timeframe involved in that?
Okay, thanks very much, Mr Mayor. I'm sure we'll all agree that we all want a lasting solution, Mr Mayor. And in my last sentence, I've already mentioned, given the situation is fast-moving, we've seen moves afoot over the last few days in particular, I do think we need to wait and see what develops over the coming weeks. And then obviously, I will respond in detail to councillor Francis.
I'm saying, he's not asking a question. ... of the public regarding the climate emergency UK scorecard assessment. Miss Chin will receive a written response to her question within seven days of this meeting. The questions and the answers will be added to the question book open to the public for inspection, which is kept in the reception in South Shields Town Hall. We'll now move on to consider any petitions received under council procedure rule nine. One petition has been received under this rule, and as per the council procedure rules, we will not discuss or debate the petition today. I will present the petition in accordance with the process set up in the constitution, and the petition will then be referred to the appropriate body. The petition has been submitted by Whitburn Lodge and is calling on South Tyneside Council to take positive action on Whitburn Lodge to make it safe and to look better. The petition has 531 signatories in total, 303 of those signatories living within the borough. In accordance with standing orders, the petition stands referred to the Acting Director of Regeneration and Environment as the appropriate body for further consideration. Further, in accordance with the council procedure rule 9.14, the Acting Director of Regeneration and Environment has provided an update on the action taken in respect of a petition received by the council at its meeting on the 7th of September 2023. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the update report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, this report provides an update on the action that has been taken in respect of the petition, which was presented to full council at our meeting of the 7th of September 2023. Mr Mayor, this satisfies the requirements of council procedure rule 9.14. I move the report and ask colleagues to note the content of the report for information.
Is that seconded? Thank you. Any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? The report is noted for information. Is that agreed? Thank you. The next item in business is to receive motions under council procedure rule 10. Today there are four motions to be considered under this rule. I will explain the procedure for motions. I'm sure you all know them. You should do by now. I will ask the proposer of the motion to move the motion, and he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members who may each speak for up to three minutes and may move amendments. Any amendment must be relevant to the motion, and only one amendment will be moved and discussed at any one time. If the motion is not carried, other amendments to the original motion may be moved. If an amendment is carried, the motion as amended takes the place of the original motion and becomes the substantive motion to which any further amendments are moved. The first motion has been submitted by councillors Ellison, Paul Dean, Cunningham, Best, Dawes and Portos. Councillor Ellison, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to rise to move this motion in support of those who've served in our-
Could you use your microphone, please? Thank you. Wasn't before.
Mr Mayor, I'm pleased to move this motion in support of those who've served in our armed forces and to further enhance our commitment to the Armed Forces community and the covenant. The motion this evening, submitted by the Royal British Legion, states that the Armed Forces community should not face disadvantage in the provision of services and that special consideration is appropriate in some cases. Here in South Tyneside, we have a proud record of supporting our Armed Forces community. The sacrifice that those individuals have made each day to keep us all safe should rightly be recognised. We know that some members of the Armed Forces community, by the often dangerous and risky nature of their work, become wounded, injured or sick in such a way that affects their life in a permanent or significant way. The credit their service motion presented here this evening seeks to ensure that those who have served in our country in the Armed Forces are able to access a full suite of support within the discretion of the local authority. As a council, we already do not factor military compensation into assessments for housing benefit, discretionary housing payments and council tax support or reduction. However, military compensation is regarded as an income in disabled facility grants. The Royal British Legion, whose work many of us in the room engage with in support, are asking local councils to take tangible steps in relation to how they approach military compensation. By agreeing to this motion, we seek the support of Cabinet to formally investigate this further with a view of extending this discretion to also extend the disabled facility grants. Mr Mayor, I seek the support of full council and formally move the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ellison. Is the motion seconded? The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to speak, ask a question or move an amendment? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I cannot really understand why the motion's been put in for all its good intentions. This council's got an Armed Forces covenant, right? We've had in place for 12 years. And that covenant states, those who serve in the Armed Forces, whether regular or reserve, and those who have served in the past and their families, should face no disadvantage compared to other citizens in the provision of public and commercial services. Special consideration is appropriate in some cases, especially for those who have given most, such as the Indian. Yep. Now, the motion covers that a person doesn't qualify if they're getting compensation from the MOD. But it also says in the motion that 20% of councils allow the grant to go ahead if they have had compensation. Yep, 20%. South Tyneside Council, because of the covenant, this motion is for something that we've already got in place. The covenant says that they shouldn't be discriminated against, and we need to comply with the covenant. And councillor Dean's the seconder is the Armed Forces champion. The covenant's there. The motion shouldn't need to go ahead with the greatest respect. It's a good motion, but so is our covenant. Thank you.
Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Dean?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say, South Tyneside Council was one of the first local authorities to sign the Armed Forces covenant back in 2011. Not only that, we have shrouded the covenant within the council's constitution to publicly demonstrate how our commitment to those who have given the most for their country is at the heart of this organisation. Since that time, Armed Forces have been championed at a cabinet member level, and I am honoured to have supported this community since becoming cabinet member in May 2023. Over the last few months, I have worked alongside some wonderfully dedicated individuals and organisations with past and present Armed Forces connections. Together, we have developed a new Armed Forces action plan to continue to build on the great work across South Tyneside Council and South Tyneside Homes. At the last meeting of the Borough Council, the mayor announced that South Tyneside Council was revalidated in its gold status in the Ministry of Defence's employer recognition scheme. This status is because we take action as an employer and as a community leader, as well as setting a positive example for other organisations, encouraging others to sign the covenant and learn from best practice. So this motion is not just welcome, I feel that it is essential action for this council to implement and set the bar for other councils to follow. Compensation is just that, it compensates veterans, it places them on a more equal footing to recognise the unique conditions they have encountered through their service. Where we have an opportunity to apply discretion and positive practice in respect of our Armed Forces community, we should do so. we should do so. As a council, we already exercise positive practice across a range of initiatives, from recruitment to advice services to supportive housing and more. On the thirteenth of December, we will launch our first ever employee group to support council and South Tyneside Homes employees who are reservists, adult cadet volunteers or who have served in the armed forces. We want to ensure we listen to the voice of employees about what's important. And so I ask that we also listen to the voice of the Royal British Legion who speak for this community across South Tyneside. I call on all colleagues across the chamber to support this motion, helping fulfil the commitment we have made under the covenant. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Ellison is the original proposer. Do you wish to say anything? Oh, I don't think. Okay. Thank you very much. Is the motion agreed? Thank you. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Carter, Barclay, Ellison, Melling, Portous, Prowlock, Mark Walsh, Anne Walsh and Donaldson. Councillor Carter, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm honoured and somewhat humbled to propose the motion outlined in your papers tonight. Would like to thank the members of the Bright Futures Young Women's Project for raising this issue. I'm pleased to say that some members of the group are in the gallery this evening. Young Women conducted research with young women across South Tyneside to gain an insight into young people's period experience in school. This research does not make for comfortable reading. Young people have made multiple reports of the inaccessible nature of school toilets, including reports of doors being taken off cubicles, toilets being locked and shutters over toilet doors. Only a few of the young women who took part in the research said they were allowed to use the toilet during school hours, which begs the question, how can young people maintain dignity during school hours when ninety seven percent of young menstruators are unable to access the toilet? Many responses from young people simply stated allow us to go to the toilet and eradicate the stigma and embarrassment young people face when they are denied access to toilets during the period. Some of the harrowing responses were, let people go to the toilet, unlock the toilet so people don't have to wait for the disabled toilet and let people use hot school hot water bottles for period pain. Periods are not a choice. Don't make it seem like a choice. As a person who has a period, I would never choose to have a period. I also don't pick and choose when it happens. Let us go to the bathroom. It's our basic human rights. That's their words, not mine. Based on their research, the Young Women of Bright Futures decided that something had to be done. They developed their innovative period pass scheme, which is designed to improve the experience of young people during school hours. Young people with a period could present staff with a period pass and would be granted access to the toilet, no questions asked. I ask council to support this motion. Thank you.
Is the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councillor Barclay. Motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to congratulate the Young People of Bright Futures for their amazing courageous work. I was proud to support them at the William Sutton Centre when they gave a presentation on their experiences as students battling the bureaucracy of school life whilst having a period. Parents, I would ask your children if they have experienced these issues. I was very shocked. I would also like to thank Anne Heatherington for her scope and knowledge and advice while working as a councillor on the period poverty group. Thank you.
Councillor Brennan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Whilst I support this motion and think it's a good idea, I do have some questions. Like, how will it be enforced and what action will be taken if we find a staff member who isn't allowing a child to use the toilet after showing the pass? Will a child need to show the pass? And how will this prevent embarrassment if the child has to show the pass to the whole class? Is it going to be like a system where the child shows the teacher secretly? And on another, sorry, and on another note, should we be extending this to all children? Isn't using the toilet a fundamental human right? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Could you answer that question, please, Councillor Carter?
Thank you for the question. I think it's important to say this isn't about naming and shaming schools who do and who do not let children go to the toilet. It's more about education around the, you know, the access to toilets for young people. I think if you look at the resolves, you know, this council resolves that outlines how the campaign will be supported by the council throughout schools, but it's also very much about education. And it's not just for young women, it's about the whole of all children within the borough.
Councillor Frances?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'd like to start by giving credit to the work that's been done by Bright Futures on this through the campaign and the associated petition. And as councillor Stonehouse mentions, I know that Anne Heatherington was involved in this as well when she was the relevant lead member, so I would like to thank her for her work too. The DFE's period product scheme provides free period products to girls and women in schools and colleges, but I know there's been a mixed response to that funding. And of course, that should be funded properly from central government. But the real issue that it's not being applied consistently well in terms of people actually being able to access that provision. Couple of weeks ago, I took part in an event in this chamber with South Tyneside Young People's Parliament. And this was discussed as part of that debate. And I know a couple of colleagues here were at that event too, as were some young people from Bright Futures. And it was disappointing to hear the real life testimony and the lived experience of some of the young people and the situations they'd had to go through and their peers and colleagues had to go through. And the kind of resulting feelings of stigma and shame around something which is perfectly natural. In the spirit of nothing about us, you know, nothing about us without us is for us. I think it's great that the ask here has come directly from the young people who are affected by this issue. So I'm more than happy to support this motion and hope others do so too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Frances. Councillor Ellison?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to speak in support of the motion. I attended that intergenerational debate a few weeks ago and had the privilege of concluding the event. And some of the narratives that we heard from young people within that chamber that night were, I think, shocking to myself and other cabinet members who were there on the evening, that their experience was such that they had been put in a position where they couldn't leave the room or they couldn't access toilet provision. So I think it's really important for us to hear what those young people have said. On the night when I closed the event, I said in my concluding remarks that we've heard exactly what you've said and will act upon that when we have the opportunity to do so. And I think this is the opportunity for us to come together collectively and say, we've heard what you've said. We're going to take tangible steps and we're going to work with you to try and achieve an outcome for this. So I think it's really important that we close the loop and we do come back to some other point and say, actually, this is how we've delivered for our young people in South Tyneside.
Is the original proposer of the motion, would you like to add to this or will move it right? Is the motion agreed? Right, thank you. Motion three has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Foster, Roberts, Kennedy, Milburn, Brennan and Robertson. Councillor Thompson, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This motion today is to ask our two elected members representing South Tyneside Council on the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel to report to full council on January the eighteenth, twenty twenty four, specifically but not exclusively on non-confidential discussions, progress, yawn and updates in relation to antisocial behaviour in South Tyneside. Of course, we, I hope, are all aware of the concerning levels of ASB in South Tyneside. Yet despite the concerning levels, I'm, should I pause?
Sorry about that, Councillor Thompson. I'm just making sure that everybody who's got a disclosable pecuniary interest leaves. And of the two members, one is paid and that member has left. The other member is allowed to stay here because they're not paid.
Of course, we, I hope, are all aware of the concerning levels of ASB in South Tyneside. Yet despite the concerning levels, I'm unaware of hearing an update or a report from any of our two representatives on the police and crime panel here in full council. Been a councillor four and a half years and I don't recall that happening in the past. Possibly reports are discussed in other committees. I don't know of this. This isn't the time and place to discuss the opposition calls recently for more of our committees to be recorded and hosted. But it needs to be mentioned again that visibility of our council's activities in the decision making process is, in my opinion, not where it should be in the twenty first century. I noted recently we had a visit from the Police and Crime Commissioner to this very chamber for the youth parliament, which is just mentioned in the last report. Of course, I'm sure we all appreciate everything that encourages our youth to take an interest in our local and national politics. But it was noted that never, certainly in my time, have we seen the Police and Crime Commissioner here at full council, where we have the widest audience. Amongst many other things, ensure residents and elected members would appreciate updates, strategies and all reports related to ASB and crime records. After all, every resident in South Tyneside pays an average hundred and sixty eight pounds a year as part of their council tax precept to the Police and Crime Commissioner. What is busy as the Police and Crime Commissioner may be, I would expect regular periodic reporting from the elected members representing South Tyneside Council on the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel. I'm surprised that they aren't eager to at every opportunity here in full council inform residents and elected members of non-confidential discussions, progress and updates in relation to antisocial behaviour. Seemingly not, hence this motion today. Not too long ago, when the opposition brought up ASB, we heard from the previous mayor that there wasn't any. When I checked the figures, it's very clear that this isn't the case. In South Tyneside, ASB is up thirteen percent this year alone. Concerning that thirteen percent in South Tyneside is twice on average the increases seen in our neighbouring authorities across the north east region. And in my view, that is a lot worse than it seems because people have simply shied away from reporting it anymore because of a growing lack of faith in the response they receive. This is actually reflected in the current Northumbria Police figures on public perception, where yet again, it's down another four percent this year in people who believe the police are responding well in their neighbourhood. In summary, it would be appreciated if the elected members representing South Tyneside Council on the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel could report at full council on January the eighteenth, twenty twenty four and hopefully periodically afterwards. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion seconded? I'll second the motion, Mr Mayor, and reserve the right to speak later. Thank you very much, councillor. I were very, very quick with this one. I haven't even said anything yet. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Now, if you just can stick your hands up and we'll take them in. Frances, Brennan, Roberts, Robertson, here. Okay. We'll start with councillor Foreman.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just for clarification, I would like to clear up the point whether I, when I declared my interest, whether it's a pecuniary interest or a personal interest, because it seems strange to me if it's a pecuniary interest and I've got to leave, I can't give you any reports. So I'd just like to clarify that as far as I'm concerned, it's a personal interest on this issue. Antisocial behaviour is of a fundamental importance to our Police and Crime Commissioner and to all the councillors who sit on the Police and Crime Panel. And I suppose, as councillor Thompson says, every councillor in this chamber has that same fundamental putting that fundamental importance to antisocial behaviour. And this is clear as it's one of the prominent features of the PCC's five priority areas. And it's a key strategic objective for South Tyneside Council. Antisocial behaviour is something that can only be resolved using a partnership approach. In South Tyneside, we have a number of meetings. We'll have a fortnightly multi-agency community safety partnership operational approach. We'll have tasking meetings. We'll have monthly safe and neighbour teams and quarterly regional strategic arrangements allow us to share learning, deliver across local boundaries and to tap into national funding streams. South Tyneside Council, the PCC and Northumbria Police have been extremely active in working towards reducing antisocial behaviour in our borough. Working together, we have deployed coordinated multi-agency response teams, featuring representatives from the council and the police to provide a visible presence to deter antisocial behaviour and also disseminate information regarding diversionary activities and provide support and advice to local businesses. A lot of the members in here will be understanding about the diversionary activities. We have a darker night's campaign and we have a lighter night's campaign, which all goes towards tackling the antisocial behaviour in the borough. We also work with socially registered landlords to discuss different themes they are seeing in their residence and to help feed this into the overall work of the Strategic Antisocial Behaviour Board. Northumbria Police has also secured two million pound of funding for a trailblazer antisocial behaviour pilot with further funding guaranteed for twenty four, twenty five. The exact figure is unknown as of yet, but it is going to be made available, which is helping fund initiatives like the Immediate Justice Pilot that will see antisocial behaviour perpetrators given back to their community by either making good on their offence or doing twenty hours of unpaid social work. So as you can see, Mr Mayor, there's a lot going on in this area on antisocial behaviour. I am happy to update the councillors on this. However, I must say that this information is all, and I mean all, publicly available. Every police and crime panel comes with a company over seventy page report. And just for the assistance of the people who signed it, I printed off two of the reports, sorry to the Green Party, where I printed off two of the reports and I identified the pages where South Tyneside and the initiatives that involve South Tyneside are. So I'll be able to give them to the relevant members when they're finished. It really, it begs the question as to whether the opposition members across the chamber were even aware of these reports. Have they read these reports? Doubt it very much. If they had, would they know that the Police and Crime Panel meetings are publicly accessible? That their whole purpose is transparency and democratic. That their whole purpose is transparency and democratic accountability? And that if they had bothered to do their homework, they would know exactly how hard this council and your Labour councillors are working to combat antisocial behaviour. Mr Mayor, I have to conclude that this motion is nothing but political grandstanding from the members opposite. It is not effective scrutiny to ask for information that you could have gotten yourself if you had been bothered to have a look for it. But as I say-
Okay, right.
As I say-
Sorry, councillor Foreman, councillor Foreman, two seconds. Councillor Foreman, two seconds.
And as far as I'm concerned-
You just sit down two seconds. Right. This is the final warning for yourself, right? You know, your behaviour is absolutely disgraceful and you haven't heeded the warnings I've given in the past. Now, let's move on with the business. Anymore, and I will ask the members in here to make sure that you don't stay in this chamber. We've had enough.
Just say, like I say, I have these books available and I can read them anytime. I'll give them tonight if they wish. And from a personal point of view, and I'll say it's from a personal point of view, this is just bandwagon politics.
Right. Thanks very much councillor Foreman for your information. Councillor Francis, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Antisocial behaviour is an issue impacting far too many residents, many on a daily basis, and it makes their lives a misery. I'm going to start on a positive and give some praise because there is a specific example in the ward that I represent where a lot of time and effort's gone in on behalf of the public, police, council staff and other agencies. And eventually, there has been in the last couple of months, a noticeable decrease in the number of incidents being reported and recorded. So this can work. Sadly, that was only achieved following extensive pressure from members of the public, putting in a lot of work along with ward councillors and, you know, council staff and other agencies. And sadly, significant issues persist and are escalating elsewhere in the borough. So there's clearly a need for all members to hear about plans and progress relating to antisocial behaviour. As a ward member, despite raising huge numbers of concerns, I often feel kept out of the loop with these issues. And these are issues having a huge impact on those we represent. And I know colleagues have had similar experiences. We're not able to access all of the meetings that have just been mentioned, that we know take place regularly. There are about things in our ward. We don't get to hear about what's happening. We don't get to hear about what the plans are. And residents ask us and we can't tell them because we don't know the information. The purpose of the Police and Crime Panel is in part to scrutinise the performance of the Police and Crime Commissioner. And I'm sad to say that despite issues being raised with the PCC and requests from me on more than one occasion for the PCC to attend a walkabout with ward members to see firsthand the issues, I've been told that she was too busy. But I know that walkabouts have happened with other elected representatives and ward members were not invited and only found out after the fact. And to me, that is not acceptable. Similarly, the Police and Crime Commissioner was supposed to come to an overview and scrutiny committee meeting to be scrutinised on this in the last couple of years, did not come to the meeting. And we found out on the day, after going through all the reports, doing the preparation, having the questions ready to ask, there was no one to ask the questions to and there were no answers forthcoming. This whole area clearly needs much closer examination and much greater sharing of information and improved inclusion of all councillors. With reference to antisocial behaviour, it's been said before, and I'll say it again, putting the community wardens in 2019 was a mistake. I'm happy to see that the community engagement officers have now been introduced and I gather speaking to colleagues in the police that that is being effective. Sadly, CCTV coverage of some of the particularly affected areas in the ward I represent has also been cut, and I would say that's also a mistake. Last week, in fact, I was on a walkabout with my colleague Sue and members of the neighbourhood policing team and members of the public. And one member of the public mentioned the council magazine that comes through everyone's door and pointed out that there was a whole article in here about antisocial behaviour with a list of what is antisocial behaviour. And she queried the fact that at the bottom of the list, it says alcohol-related trouble or buying and selling of drugs. And that was news to the police who we were talking to that buying and selling of drugs is now considered antisocial behaviour as opposed to criminal activity, which it actually is. So there's concern on the part of members of the public about how the council communicates around ASB, what actions being taken in relation to antisocial behaviour. And, you know, we've got the cabinet member here who sits on this committee and it seems only right that this is brought to Borough Council and by extension, the public in terms of progress and updates relating to this issue. I'm disappointed by the accusation of bandwagon jumping and grandstand politics and all that. It's, you know, yes, there are reports that people can read, but if a resident came to me complaining of the antisocial behaviour that's blighting their life day in, day out, and I said, oh, go and read a report on the council website, that'll tell you what's happening. I don't think they'd be very satisfied with that response. And I don't think you would be if you were in that position either. So I don't accept that that's good enough. I do think even the stuff that you've said tonight, I welcome that we've had that information shared with us. And members of the public that watch this meeting will have that information now that they didn't have before, and that's positive. But hearing something on the night is not the same as having a report that you can go away, scrutinise, come up with the questions for the things that need further clarification and then come back in this forum and be able to ask those questions and get the questions answered. That's a totally different thing. And I think that's what the residents deserve. And I think that's what us as elected representatives need to have in order to serve those residents. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Millen? Councillor Millen?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The ward I both live in and represent has been at goal and all saints. This ward has antisocial behaviour now so common, we have been given a hotspot status by Northumbria Police. This has led to the Home Office allocating the ward a portion of £1 million funding to tackle the issue. Now, two police officers have started to carry out foot patrols four days a week, every week. Data to give our ward hotspot status was gathered from residents reporting every single incident via telephone and 101 or the police website, tell us something page, and always 999 for an emergency. So I encourage residents to continue reporting no matter how small they consider antisocial behaviour to be, as it all helps paint a picture of the problem. I continue to work with police and the antisocial behaviour team at the council and thank them for their ongoing hard work. I welcome this motion and would encourage a progress update from the elected members on the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel as soon as possible. Information they hold will help councillors better understand how we work to eradicate antisocial behaviour or minimise it as much as possible. Our residents deserve to live in areas without antisocial behaviour and we as councillors must do all we can to achieve this.
Councillor Brennan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor Foreman for your feedback tonight. I think it would be great to hear updates from the relevant members in full council as community police attending community area forums are bit hit and miss at the minute. Sometimes police turn up at these community area forums and sometimes they don't. And for the public to access this, it's pretty hard to find out when the police are actually turning up. We need regular updates and sitting on these panels shouldn't be taken for granted. They're an important position and should be used to levy influence, feed members' concerns, share policy and direct resources to where they are needed. Likewise, information should be passed back and reported to full council from these panels so the public can be reassured by members that we are working in harmony with the police and the concerns are being addressed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We heard earlier about this level of debate in here and respect for each other and what have you. And we've just seen a perfect example. That motion was polite, respectable. And all we've got from the other side is just spitting feathers. There's just absolutely no need for it. What about the people that cannot access the internet, that can't afford the internet? We're not just talking about councillors. Yeah, there you can offer a copy of reports to. Now, I've been a councillor since 2019 with a little gap. And since 2019, you know, we've got 20 outside bodies that people from this council that members are on. But there's nothing more important than the Police and Crime Panel. And since 2019, the members who've been allocated the Police and Crime Panel have never spoken here. And it is what it says on the tin. As I said before, the Police and Crime Commissioner hasn't been able to attend for whatever reasons. So our member that's on that committee should be feeding back. Bear in mind that that member is getting £1,000 a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Two seconds, councillor. Right. Thanks for that councillor Foreman. Councillor Roberts?
Welcome. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a quick one, Mr Mayor. Just what councillor Foreman's just said there, councillor Foreman, sorry, he doesn't get paid. But the other one's had to leave because she does get paid. So that just puts that right there. Just tells him exactly what he's talking, he doesn't know what he's talking about. He's talking about antisocial behaviour or anything to do with the police. But getting back onto the police, Mr Mayor, I think when we're sitting here, I'm talking about antisocial behaviour, we know it's gone through the roof in this whole borough. And the police aren't doing anything at all about it. Nothing. Can you see them going round? Well, you don't even see them going round. But if you sit down now and ask any of your members or any of your residents what they think of the police, they'll tell, I would say 70% would say we need the police. But you ask them, do they trust them? And I'll tell you, it'll drop down to about 10%, and that's going through everybody. There's nobody got trust in the police these days because they're not showing their faces and they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Antisocial behaviour, you never see them when people are falling up for them. Never see them. But if somebody goes past and waves at somebody, smiles at somebody or takes dead flowers off their own parents' graves, the police are there knocking on their doors. So when they're saying they haven't got the resources, they have got the resources for some people, but not all of them. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks for your view. Councillor here.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to actually correct councillor Thompson. When I sat in that chair as former mayor, Mr Mayor, I did say on behalf of Harton colleagues, which I'm sorry to say they're not here tonight because they would back what I was saying, that there wasn't any antisocial behaviour at that particular time in Harton Ward. Because we just had, don't laugh at me councillor, I'm telling you the truth.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Councillor Robertson?
Excuse me?
Excuse me, councillor. Right.
I'm not-
Councillor here, please sit down. Councillor Roberts, I'm, you know, getting a bit, you know, fed up of, you know, the misconduct from over here. Now, I'm asking that you're no longer heard in this particular item on the agenda. And any further disturbances, and I'll be asking that you're removed from this meeting. Can I have a second? Can I have a second? Could I have a second to that motion, please? Right. Could I have a second to councillor Roberts not being okay? Thank you. Yes. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The previous evening councillor, we'd had a CAF meeting, or the previous week, sorry. And it was reported to us by Northumbria Police that there wasn't any antisocial behaviour in Harton Ward. Following that particular council meeting councillor Roberts, the following day, I got in contact with the neighbourhood police officers. So I did take on board what you said and I am not calling your beloved wife a liar.
Right.
So just to put the record straight, that's what was said in that council meeting, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor here. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to add a little bit of strength to my learned colleague, their councillor Foreman, around having sat on that Police and Crime Panel for a couple of years. Not only is the information publicly available, but you're actually allowed to go and sit when that panel's in session. Many people do and, you know, quite clearly, not everybody can attend and go up at that particular time. But what I feel really strongly about, and I'm sorry to hear that it needs a representative from that meeting that is open and reported on and members of the press are there as well, that it's actually incumbent upon us as local authority members to feed back to our residents. There is no way that that Police and Crime Panel can cover the intricacies of the bespoke nature of some of the difficulties that our communities face and some of the benefits and the input that they require. So it is our role in partnership with all of those other organisations to meet the need or to attempt to meet the need of our residents. That is what we are elected to do and I feel extremely passionate about that. With regards to the reporting back and the reporting of our Police and Crime Commissioner, I would say that she's especially active. She is, you know, kind of on Twitter, Facebook. I'm absolutely confident that she would respond to any member of the public's query. The main role of the PCC panel is to measure the achievements of the chief constable against that police plan, the action plan. So we need not take our minds off what the nature of that panel is set up for. And it doesn't cover everything. It is quite high level actually. And I think I accept that the police can't always come to CAF. However, there are loads of opportunities and I think councillor Millen hit the nail on the head saying that we must continue to report, we must encourage our residents to continue to report so that they do create those hotspot areas. And if they can't do that themselves, then it is incumbent upon us to assist them in doing so. And I really think that we need to take and grasp the nettle here that if our residents are facing something, that we're there with them and not, you know, putting through a particular motion where actually if there isn't a report that is accessible to- councillor Thompson, would you like me to continue? Or may I? Thank you. Thank you. If there isn't, if there is something that isn't accessible to our community, then we make it accessible to them. We are that conduit. If they haven't got access to the internet to read a report, you've just seen councillor Foreman has provided two copies of it. And if we are to talk through that report with our residents with the particular interests that they have, then we do that and we afford them the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kilgore covered a lot of the salient points. But for me, you're absolutely right councillor Francis, we did some checking on some of the antisocial figures and everybody's blighted. And nobody should ever have to deal with antisocial behaviour, but we all know it exists in all of our communities. But you're absolutely right, it is down, youth antisocial behaviour is down by 16% on 2022 figures. And we'd like that to be down even further. It may be that your ward is obviously getting more of the benefit of the police time and that's wonderful. And I'm sure we would all like the same in all of our wards. I do think though that what we've done tonight is we've brought a situation here that actually should be dealt with every day in all of our lives, talking to all of our residents. Our CAFs are the place where we get individual information. And I have to say, Jaron Bolden are very well served. There is a time when, and not a time the police can't come, but they do come to most of them. And we get individual right down to local level, street level of what's going on. And that's the place where we should be talking about it because that's what matters. They are our residents and we deal with them on a very localised position. So thank you very much.
Councillor Foster, you're eventually getting round to yourself. Would you like to speak with your three minutes now or?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and it'll be less than three minutes. Firstly, I've got the utmost respect for councillor Foreman, but I have to disagree with some of his comments. This motion was absolutely put in in the right spirit of being a councillor. We've all got an interest in antisocial behaviour. And I'm sure every member in this room, every word of that motion was done with truth, honesty and it's an honourable motion. It's not a point-scoring exercise at all. It's still important. I hope this isn't a motion that is just going to be another motion that's objected because it's somebody from the opposition who's put it forward. I've seen this happen in this chamber far too often. I think it's perfectly reasonable to ask the lead member to really just fill in the gaps. Some of the information you gave tonight was excellent. And it really is, we're not looking- And it really is, we're not looking to go into the, you know, the minute detail of every meeting. But just an overview, a summary of what's being done, give us the opportunity to ask you some questions. And just to see which way we're moving forward, because I think we all should move forward together. Antisocial behaviour, it's an issue that concerns all of our residents from time to time. And as elected members, regardless of which party or group we represent, I believe our duty has been set tonight to our residents to work together to reduce and hopefully raise their concerns. The more information we all have from whichever corner it comes from, will surely assist us to carry out our duties and reassure our residents. I respect all members and officers alike who work hard to reduce antisocial behaviour and other matters. Really do appreciate and respect the work you do. And all this motion is asking to do is to come in January and just to fill in the gaps and it'll explain to us about the meetings. It's on camera, it's probably the best, it's the best environment where people can be, residents can hear what's being said. It's a decent motion with the right intentions. So I please just support it tonight. You know it's right. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Thompson, is the original proposal due us to reply to the debate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Your team limited, by the way.
Start the clock. Just a few responses councillor here. Somebody informed you 0% ASB anywhere in South Tyneside, you accepted that? I'll just leave that there. Councillor Huntley, councillor Kilgore. Operating at the ground level? I think everybody does that. It's about improving the situation, improving our knowledge base. That was the point of this motion, getting access to as much information so we can feed back at ground level to residents. Councillor Foreman? I had a few things to say, but ultimately you mentioned multitasking group. We've got a partner focus group. But you and your colleague who's sitting on the Police and Crime Panel, you're our window. We don't have access, for all we ask for access to those sort of groups, you're the window. So that is one of the reasons we need as much reporting as possible. Just in what you mentioned when you were talking about what's going on at the moment, you gave an insight, I'm sure, to a lot of people on the immediate justice project. Great to see you're bigging something up from the Conservative government through their new ASB policy. But I understand that's still only trialled across the country, but maybe you could elaborate on that in the future. That is a fantastic potential way of addressing ASB. So overall, I didn't seem to get a clear response from you if you accept this motion. But I hope everybody in the chamber today can and support this motion so we can have as much information that's available to us as is practically possible. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Is the motion agreed? Okay, one or two, I think we can have a show of hands as to is the motion agreed or not agreed. So is the motion agreed, please? Those not agreeing with the motion, please? Yep. 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 29 against the motion and 14 for the motion, so the motion is not agreed, thank you. Motion for has been submitted by councillors Robertson, Roberts, Brennan, Foster, Kennedy, Milburn and Thompson. You're proposing the motion councillor Roberts, right? Okay councillor Roberts, you have, you can move the motion and speak for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, this is the motion on how long it's taken officers to bring complaints forward. As we've seen not so long ago, some of these complaints are going back three year, two year, which is an absolute joke, an absolute joke after waiting that length of time to get a motion, to get a complaint through. Personally speaking, it's my opinion that I think if officers done the job they're paid for, instead of putting their noses in to run the council, I think this would be a hell of a lot better and these motions will get, these complaints will get seen to a lot quicker. Thank you.
The motion's seconded by councillor Milburn.
Yeah. Sorry.
Speak now or reserve the right?
Reserve the right to speak, Mr Mayor, thank you.
The motion is now opened in debate by members. Do any members wish to question, speak or move for the amendment? Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As we've heard tonight, the Standards Committee are aware of the significant delays in the time it has taken and continues to take to complete several outstanding formal investigations. The number of complaints the Monitoring Officer and the Standards Committee receive from members, officers and residents of the borough are unprecedented. For context, since January, and these are updated figures from what we heard earlier, the council has considered 230 member codes of conduct complaints. During a similar period, Newcastle City Council, a much bigger council than ours, has received only eight complaints about councillors. In North Tyneside, 18 complaints of potential breaches of their code of conduct were received. In Durham, there have been 120 complaints, but 93 of these are related to town and parish councillors. And there are 126 such councillors there compared to our 54. 188 of our 230 complaints have been concluded, that's 82%. And this includes the five formal hearings we already heard about. There are many factors that can affect the time it takes to complete both informal and formal investigations, some of which are outside the investigator's control. If members refuse to engage with the investigation, it only adds to the problem and the timescales involved. All formal investigations are a drain on public money, and the costs are in the region of £20,000 per investigation and can sometimes be considerably more. It is important that there are realistic targets from the outset for the completion of a formal complaint. However, in some instances, the complaint investigation can become complex and very time consuming. The investigation of a complaint must take as long as it takes. We don't want to be in a position of being criticised for not properly or fully investigating a complaint or being accused of making a hasty or rash decision. Mr Mayor, let's be honest here. If certain members of this chamber took more time to learn about the code of conduct policies or learnt how to behave themselves, we wouldn't be in this position. This motion is for one reason and one reason alone, to curtail the investigation process against some complaints, and that cannot be allowed to happen. And I would ask colleagues to reject this motion in the interest of transparency and accountability. We cannot accept time limits or constraints on complaint investigations. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Pedro?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I concur with my colleague here. How can there be timescales on any complaint as each one is unique? For example, if the complaint is ongoing and the complaint about behaviour is not a one-off but still a regular happening, each incident would have to be recorded and collated. If the sheer volume of complaints outstrips the resources available to investigate them in a timely manner, are they then thrown out? There should be no restrictions on our ability to thoroughly investigate and sanction where applicable. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor here?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Purely on the basis that the recommendation of this motion is to refer the feasibility of it to our Constitution Committee, I will be supporting the motion tonight. I'd like to draw the attention to the LGA guidance is quoted in the motion, that they are suggested timeframes. I appreciate the considerable effort that our Monitoring Officer and her team put into managing these complaints. I think if we're able to put together a target of what we want to achieve as a council in delivering appropriate timeframes, that gives us a goal. We might not be able to meet it from day one. But as the independent chair of the scrutiny committee has detailed to us tonight, we do need to work on delivering more timely outcome to these complaints. And I think this could be a really important factor in setting that target. So I would like to ask the members of this chamber to consider putting this motion through tonight and having the Constitution Committee get some guidelines on what we can realistically achieve. So everybody involved in the complaints process is aware from day one how long it is going to take to resolve, because at the moment, we simply don't have that framework. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've already talked tonight about the impact that delays in dealing with complaints, the impact that that has on both the complainant and the subject of complaints. So I do think it's something we should move towards is trying to reduce the amount of time it takes. I'm slightly confused by the talk of unprecedented levels of complaints when we already heard in the report earlier that complaints peaked in 2017, 18 and has reduced since then. I also question the accusation about certain members, quote unquote, being responsible when three of the five detailed in that previous report came from the Labour benches. Of course, complaints need to be dealt with thoroughly. And we're not saying that things should be rushed through here, but just that there should be consideration given to having, as councillor here says, an objective in mind of how quickly you think you should be able to turn these things around. And the LGA suggests complaints should be turned around within six months. We don't tend to comply with that at the moment. Though of course, I recognise the volume of complaints impacts our ability to deal with them in that timeframe. I would also say that a timeframe for communication with complainants would be welcome, even if that's just to say there's no further update at this time, investigations are ongoing. And in fact, the stages of the complaint, I think, is also worth communicating to complainants. I'm not sure if that happens at the moment. As I said in the previous item, the way to speed it up altogether would be for fewer councillors to act contrary to the code of conduct. But this motion makes perfect sense to me. I'd hope it would result in a better experience, both for those who make complaints and those who are the subject of complaints, and I'm happy to support it this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Milburn, would you like to?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, I'll keep this short and sweet. I agree with a lot of what's just been said. However, you know, with the volume of complaints and behaviour, obviously that's the root of it. We all know that. Let's not make any bones about it. And we are hopefully going to make some inroads into that. However, I also agree with councillor here's theory on timeframes etc. I think that's something we should be working towards. However, knowing my background before I retired etc., I was responsible for a bit of kit that cost £20,000 a minute, every minute it was stopped, 20 grand. So the here stuff like takes as long as it takes is just not acceptable as far as I'm concerned. We must find a way to resolve these issues more quickly. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Milburn. Councillor Roberts, do you wish to? Thank you. Okay, is the motion agreed? We'll have dissenting voices. Once again, can we conduct a vote, please? And could we have a show of hands? Those who agree with the motion, please? 14. 14. 14. And those who do not agree with the motion, please? Show hands. So the motion is not agreed. 14, 4 and 30 against. Colleagues, that concludes the council business of the day. And given that this is the last meeting before Christmas, I would like to wish everybody a peaceful Merry Christmas, a healthy Christmas and my best wishes for the new year. Can I thank everyone in the public gallery and those watching at home for their attendance this evening? And despite the inclement weather, I wish everybody a good night and God bless you all. Thank you.